Ten. Five.
Good morning. Today is Wednesday, January 13th, 2021. I'm Akeem Ashford, Director of Communications for Sedgwick County. We're streaming today's meeting on KPTS, Channel 8, and on Sedgwick County's Facebook and YouTube channels, and also on our website at sedgewickcounty.org. Commissioners have plexiglass between them, staff are socially distancing in the room and wearing masks. We also will utilize a conference line and video messaging as needed. During yesterday's commission staff meeting, there were several topics of importance of discussion. Commissioners received an update on the Riverside Hospital analysis, and more complete information will be shared next month. Our federal lobbyists discussed initial plans for the 2021 federal legislative platform. We also discussed the COVID-19 vaccine schedule. Kansas is no longer last in the country for vaccine distribution, so very good news there. If you decided you are already ready to recycle your real Christmas trees, we have several locations available around Sedgwick County to mulch it. It's right there on your screen. All you have to do is go to sedgewickcounty.org for more information, and the graphics and all the information for you are there. For more information, you can also follow us on our social media pages, again, on our Facebook, as well as YouTube and Instagram pages for more information. Mark your calendars for the Team Justice Community Summit that is coming up. I'll pull up the graphic for you here. The Team Justice Community Summit from 9:00 AM to 3:30 PM on Saturday, January 23rd. During this virtual summit, you'll be able to hear from several respected leaders, both locally and on the national level, about racial and ethnic disparities, and learn about successful youth programs right here in our own community. Summit participants will also help identify three priorities to focus on to help our youth succeed in the future. Please register online. More information is right there on the screen for you. On today's agenda, we've got an appointment to the Lake Afton Township Trustee. The chairman will present the 2020 Chairman's Award. You'll also review recommendations from bid board. Following the consent agenda, commissioners will select the 2021 Chair and Pro Tem Chairman. The meeting is all yours, sir.
Okay. Thank you, Akeem, for the introduction, and welcome everybody to the Wednesday, January 13th, Sedgwick County Board of Commissioners meeting. I'd like to make a special welcome to our newest Commissioner, Sarah Lopez, who will be joining us for her first official meeting just sworn in, and so we welcome Sarah to the commission. So, good morning and welcome.
Thank you.
And again, the rest of the Commissioners welcome again back to a new year. Let's hope it's a productive year. So, with that, I'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
End vacation. To be observed by a moment assailants, please remain standing for the flag salute.
Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Roll call. Commissioner Lopez?
Present.
Commissioner Dennis?
Present.
Commissioner Howell?
Present.
Commissioner Cruz?
Present.
Chairman Meitzner?
Present.
Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, we don't have anybody speaking to us directly on the public agenda. I think we had an email that we've all been able to review and see. Any comments or questions about the emails from the public agenda?
I'd just like to make a motion to receive and file.
Okay. I'll second that. Motion to receive and file the public agenda items. Any other comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Appointments. Item A, resolution appointing Richard Flaherty to the Sedgwick County Afton Township trustee position.
Yes. Commissioner Dennis. I'm sorry. Oh, Mike, yeah, Commissioner.
Mike Papoun, County Counselor. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Anytime that there's a vacancy in a township position by statute, the Board of County Commissioners makes the appointment to fill that vacancy. In this particular case, the current township clerk, Mr. Stolzatz, happened to be written in during the election to also be the Afton Township trustee. Because he can't hold both positions, he resigned the trustee position and wants to remain as the township clerk. Upon the recommendation of Commissioner Dennis, he wants to appoint Richard Flaherty to the board as the township trustee. The resolution's in proper form and asks that you adopt the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. And it was an interesting situation that we worked through, but thankfully, Richard Flaherty has volunteered to fill that position, so I'd like to make a motion at this time to appoint Richard Flaherty as the township trustee for Afton Township.
Second.
There's been motion and a second. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Motion carries. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Item B, resolution appointing Jessica Beck to the Sedgwick County Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Mr. Papoun?
Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoun, County Counselor, once again. This is an appointment, happened to be Commissioner Cruz's appointment, to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board. This is a board created by state statute and county charter resolution. Each Commissioner gets one appointment. It's a rather unique board from the standpoint that no more than three members of this board can be from one political party. We have two vacancies occurring effective January 19th of this year, Commissioner Cruz's appointment and Commissioner Lopez's appointment. Commissioner Cruz has recommended that Jessica Beck, a Republican, be appointed as her appointment to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board, which now leaves two Republicans and two Democrats on the board, and Commissioner Lopez can appoint someone from either party or somebody unaffiliated. But at this point, we have a resolution appointing Jessica Beck as Sheriff's Civil Service Board member, and would ask that you approve the resolution.
Okay. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Mike, for that explanation. I did speak with the sheriff. One of his requirements and recommendations is to have a fair and impartial person because of the type of work that this board does. Jessica Beck came to mind as a person meeting those requirements, and so I will make a motion that we appoint Jessica Beck to the Sheriff's Civil Service Board.
Okay. I'll second that. Any other questions or comments? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business Part One. Item C, presentation of the 2020 Chairman's Award.
Excuse me for a minute. I'll join. Okay. As is customary, at the end of the year, for the chairman, the county commission and the county has adopted a policy where they given a award called the Chairman's Award, and it's up to the exclusive decision by the chairman to determine who or what organization or what individual. So, based on the year we had of 2020, there could be a whole, we could award this to every citizen in the county for their contribution, but that would have been about 500,000 plaques. I chose not to do that. So, but we did have, after a lot of careful thought and content or discussion with a few people, I'm choosing to recognize our health industry as a, for this award. So, first off, I'd like to welcome Dr. Sam Antonioz up. He's the Chief Financial Officer at Via Christi, and we at Ascension Via Christi. Had the pleasure of meeting Sam on a weekly basis, every Monday. We've had updated reports from the status of the Via Christi health system related to the COVID virus, and it's been incredibly valuable for us as a community to have direct input with the hospital administration, and it's helped guide decisions and helped guide as we've battled through this. So, Dr. Sam, I can't thank you enough for our new friendship. Maybe it'll be a real friendship after this is all over. But with that, it says in recognition of Ascension Via Christi healthcare workers for outstanding service to Sedgwick County 2020, from the chairman of the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. So, Sam?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sam, you want to say a few words? And by the way, this is, Sam is representing
Ascension.
Ascension Via Christi, but all of their workers, incredible amount of workers, and so thanks all your workers.
Sure. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for having us here. Everything about this virus was very unusual. The virus, in the words of the leading historian of the pandemic, is normally no more than an annoying brat of a disease, but this strain turned killer in virulent fashion. It attacked the young, the healthy, as well as the very old, and the very young, and the infirm. Because the virus could be transmitted by casual interaction, the presence of the pandemic affected social behavior. The city canceled its annual fair, and a theater, and all other public places were closed. Many people wore gauze masks over their mouths to slow the spread of the virus. The Sisters responded by setting up a special section in the hospital for pandemic patients. This gesture created a place where the ill could be assured of care. Yet, there were more patients than healthcare workers could handle, and a critical shortage of nurses occurred. Nurses at St. Francis and every other medical facility worked long hours caring for large numbers of patients. Now, although this sounds recent and familiar, it actually comes from a book written about St. Francis, chronicling the first 100 years, and is referring to the 1918 pandemic, the flu pandemic. That pandemic took a similar toll on our community. Wichitaans knew that in desperate times, they could count on what is now Ascension Via Christi. They also knew that they could count on the outstanding physicians leading the medical community, on the nurses and other caregivers providing their care, on the government officials working in partnership with other community leaders to provide support, and on their friends, families, and neighbors. That remains true today, as our community continues to rely on our medical staff and care teams as we battle this horrific virus. Since the pandemic first arrived in our community approximately 10 months ago, we have pulled together as a ministry to meet the needs of our community. Physicians, clinical and nonclinical staff have worked long hours under arduous conditions to ensure our ability to provide safe, quality care to patients infected by the virus and afflicted by other conditions and injuries. But more importantly, we also have pulled together as a community. The partnership we have with you, Chairman Meitzner, and the support we have received from the Sedgwick County Commission and the Health Department have been amazing. From your ongoing communication and coordination of our community efforts, to the funding that allowed us to bring in additional staff to help and provide relief to our caregivers, to this much appreciated recognition today. Over the past year, we have continued to provide excellent care to tens of thousands of patients who have come to us for care, which we could not do without the contributions of our entire team and the high level of support that we continue to receive from local government, business, and community leaders. I cannot say enough how proud I am for our medical staff, frontline caregivers, and the associates who support them, nor about how proud we are to serve this community. While we are not through this yet, and we must stay vigilant in masking, physical distancing, hand hygiene, the COVID-19 vaccine has provided a glimmer of hope that there is an end in sight. And with your continuing help, for which we are tremendously grateful, we are confident that when all is said and done, that our efforts as a community will go down in history as having succeeded against all odds. On behalf of everyone at Ascension Via Christi, thank you very much and God bless.
Next up is a similar story. So, with the group of the Wesley Medical Center healthcare workers, same story, same partnership, same everything that we just have talked about. And on behalf of the commission, and on behalf of me as the chairman, I want to recognize all of the workers at Wesley Medical Center. And here to accept the recognition is Dave Stewart. He's the Director of Marketing and PR. Dave, thank you for joining, and please relay our appreciation to all the workers and the management. So.
Good morning, everyone. Again, my name is Dave Stewart. I'm Director of Marketing and Public Relations for Wesley Healthcare. Due to a scheduling conflict, Bill Volich, our CEO, could not be here today, but he did ask me to convey his sincere gratitude to Chairman Meitzner for this recognition for all of our healthcare workers. Since the very beginning of this pandemic, the physicians and staff at Wesley have worked tirelessly to care for the people of Sedgwick County, both those with COVID and those with other conditions. It hasn't been easy. COVID-19 has taken a physical and emotional toll on every member of our team, as they celebrated with those patients who recovered and offered comfort to those who have not. This award is a tribute to their strength and their perseverance, and we're truly honored and grateful for the continued recognition and support that you have given our team throughout the pandemic. We would also like to thank each resident of Sedgwick County who has helped us control the spread of this virus by maintaining social distancing, by practicing good hand hygiene, and by wearing masks in public. For those of you who have helped us, we appreciate it, and you have truly made a difference. While we appreciate this award and the recognition that we are receiving here today, in the end, getting through this pandemic has been a team effort that has required all of us to work together in the best interest of the people we serve. At Wesley Healthcare, we're proud to have worked with you and with the greater healthcare community here in Wichita to meet these challenges head-on. Thank you so much, and we are truly grateful for this award.
Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dave, and please give Bill our congratulations and appreciation, and all the staff. So, lastly, in the healthcare, we also have, a big part of this community has been those that have served, the veterans in our community, and there's a, there's a hospital called the Veteran Administration Hospital, the Bob Dole Hospital, and Candace Ifabai is the Medical Center Director, and Candace as well has been on every Monday, reporting in the status of our veterans in the community at the hospital and their staff. And it's been, again, a valuable contribution with her statistics and the numbers that the VA has been doing. A little bit different, their clients are, you know, clearly veterans, where that our hospital situation handles everybody, and so, but it's still been incredibly valuable. So, except in recognition of the Robert J. Dole VA Medical Center healthcare workers for outstanding service, Sedgwick County, from the chairman and the Board of Sedgwick County Commissioners. So, Candace, thank you for your participation and our friendship, so.
Good morning. I'm Candace Ifabai. I'm the CEO of the Robert J. Dole VA Medical Center. Thank you so much, Chairman, and thank you to the board for this prestigious recognition. The Robert J. Dole VA Medical Center is very proud to be a part of this community, and we look forward to continuing to contribute to improving the quality of life for our veterans and to serving our community here locally. While 2020 has been exceptionally challenging, particularly for healthcare and the healthcare industry and government agencies involved in battling the COVID-19 pandemic, we have demonstrated our collective ability to overcome adversity and persevere. Partnerships and cooperation at all levels of government, as well as private organizations, nonprofits, and non-governmental organizations are critical to our success. An example of these partnerships is evident with our Veterans Ride Free Program with the City of Wichita and United Way of the Plains. Veterans can now ride city transit buses free, and we are seeing nearly 3,000 veterans use the program per month since we started the program last year. One veteran quoted, she no longer has to budget for a monthly bus pass, which now enables her to purchase more food for her home and eliminate her food insecurity for her life. Working with the Disabled American Veterans Organization, we've begun to deliver monthly food bank items from two local food pantries to veterans in our housing programs. We are now delivering more than 1,200 deliveries to our veterans each month. These are just a few of the examples of the wonderful partnerships we've enjoyed that benefit our veterans and impact our community as a whole. Beyond our partnerships, we are very proud to coordinate the care for over 30,000 veterans across the state of Kansas, and we do a very, very good job with that coordination of care. Despite the pandemic, we've expanded our capabilities and we've improved access to healthcare by leveraging technology. We were busy with COVID, but we still coordinated over 350,000 outpatient visits in 2020. We're also the leading edge for preventative medicine. The Dole VA ranked fourth nationally for inpatient preventative measures. This means that our healthcare providers are being proactive and seeking to diagnose and treat and eliminate healthcare issues before they even become a problem. Our Community Living Center earned a five-star rating in Quality, the highest rating possible. All of this leads to healthy residents and a vibrant community. With the distribution of the COVID-19 vaccine in the forefront of everyone's minds lately, we've moved into the early phases of vaccinating our most vulnerable veterans. In the spirit of partnerships and cooperation, we hope to assist the county and city by providing vaccinations if needed for any of their first responders who qualify for healthcare through the VA. The more each of us can do to assist one another, the quicker we can begin to reopen our businesses and move our community forward towards a sense of normalcy. In closing, I'd like to once again thank the chairman and his fellow commissioners for this award. On behalf of the over 1,400 employees at the Robert J. Dole VA, we look forward to this continued partnership from all of you all, and we are pleased to support our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Candace. And Candace, also, I want to recognize two of our commissioners, Commissioner Howell and Commissioner Dennis are veterans, and thank you for your service. I know Commissioner Dennis is still very active. Do you, I don't know if you have any comment that you want to share with Candace or the, on behalf of the Commissioner?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First of all, I'd like to thank all of our health professionals. My wife, my mother, my aunt, all three are registered nurses, and they worked with great physicians and other great healthcare workers throughout our community. I especially want to thank the VA. As a veteran of 29 years in the military, and Commissioner Howell also served in the Air Force, we appreciate what the VA does for each and every one of our veterans every day. Thank you to the VA and to all of our hospitals and all of the healthcare providers throughout our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Howell, do you want to say, mention anything?
Thank you for the chance to speak. Mr. Chairman, I want to say this is a very good choice for the Chairman's Award this year. Excellent job. The hospitals have done a tremendous job this year. They all deserve, they deserve recognition, and I appreciate the fact that you are highlighting them, but specifically to the VA Hospital. I have lots of veterans friends, friends that are veterans that have, I don't typically go to the VA Hospital personally, but I would tell you that I know those that do are very impressed, and they're very pleased with the services there. And I love hearing from Colonel Dennis here about the great things he experiences when he goes out over there. So, I know it's a tremendous asset to this community, and a lot of states would love to have what we have here in Wichita. Thank you to our federal delegation for their defense of our VA Hospital, and it's just a really, it's a great jewel in our community that we get to enjoy. Thank you for all those that make that happen. You are heroes in my mind. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thanks for your comments. No disrespect. Sarah, you're not a veteran, are you?
I'm not, no.
Okay. All right. Okay.
Chairman, if I may, before you go on to the next, I have really been impressed with the Monday calls. Dr. Antonioz, you give real and raw information to us. I cannot express my gratitude for all of the extra work that all of our healthcare system has put in, from town halls to showing up here at this podium, to going across the street and with the city. You guys have really put in extra hours to help this community understand really what's going on and to do the right thing. So, I can't express my gratitude enough to every single person in our healthcare system, because you have done more than expected of you this year, and I know that it won't stop, right? It doesn't stop now that we're into 2021. So, I just, I cannot thank you enough for all the things that you've done above and beyond just providing medical care to our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cruz. And actually, Commissioner Lopez was a recent employee of Ascension.
Still am, kind of.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah. So, obviously, medicine and healthcare is really kind of where my passion is and what I've spent my career doing up until this week. So, I've been with Ascension for 15 years, and I think one thing we overlook a lot through this pandemic is really what our medical community is going through this year. I mean, we have put such a strain on an already overwhelmed sometimes system, and to see what you guys have been able to accomplish through that is just, I mean, there really aren't enough words to thank everybody from, you know, our patient care techs to our respiratory therapists and our nursing staff or physicians. You guys have put your physical health, you know, in the way, in harm's way, I guess, and also mentally. I mean, what you guys have had to go through this year is just, it's heartbreaking to think about some of the stories I've heard from my colleagues or just friends that work at Wesley or at the VA as well. And so, my sincere thank you to all of you and for everything that you've done this year and will continue to do through next.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner. Okay. Seems like there's a real appreciation for our medical world, if you haven't got that theme. Okay. And then, lastly, this is a little special. If you've been a citizen of Wichita area or Sedgwick County for the last 19 years, you've probably heard of this little place called The Lord's Diner. And I'm very familiar with it for a number of years, and the challenge that they had during this, what they do every day anyway, but then the challenge that happened in this past year for trying to feed everybody, anybody, anybody and everybody with no questions asked. asked during this pandemic season was incredibly challenging. And with that, I just felt it very important that the to further recognize and appreciation for our community that The Lord's Diner will be recognized for their outstanding service to Sedgwick County during 2020. And I want to emphasize outstanding. So on that behalf of the Director of Lord's Diner, Jan Habberly, known her for a number of years, and I'm so proud to award the diner and recognizing you, Jan, Jan and the staff. So thank you for your service.
Oh, me?
You're taking mine off.
Good morning. Congratulations to everyone. That was, what you do is awesome. I'm amazed. Thank you, Chairman Meitzner, for the recognizing the work of The Lord's Diner. In February, we will celebrate our 19th anniversary. In those 19 years, we have never closed our doors. Even with the arrival of COVID, we have managed with the sacrifice of our staff and volunteers to continue to serve all who come to our doors. One of our guests said it best. He said, "Thank you for not forgetting about us." Just a little bit of history on The Lord's Diner. It was inspired by Bishop Eugene Gerber, who walked with many of the homeless in the downtown, and he wanted a place for them to receive a meal served with respect and dignity. With the support of the Catholic Diocese, city, county leaders, and many throughout Wichita, The Lord's Diner was born. We quickly began began to see an increase of those we serve, to include people on fixed incomes due to disabilities or illness, the unemployed, the underemployed, and the mentally ill. In 2011, we expanded to South Wichita with a second location, which was just the beginning of our expansion. We have just, we our growth is is to assure fewer people in our community will face hunger. We now have three food trucks serving hot meals to neighborhoods in need, and in 2017, we opened a location in Pittsburgh, Kansas. Last year, we served our 6,000,000th guest. McDonald's, look out, huh?
[laughing]
This year, this year, we even added a food pantry to our Broadway location. One of the most amazing things that warms my heart every single day is The Lord's Diner diversity. Not the diversity of those we serve, which there is a vast of diversity, but those who volunteer. The Lord's Diner gives, The Lord's Diner gives those from every walk of life and every corner of our community the opportunity to serve others. I'm not sure which is greater, the gratitude of our guests or that of those who volunteer to serve. Lawyers, doctors, even county commissioners serve alongside of farmers, nurses, teachers, and youth groups. This is a true melting pot of nearly 6,000 residents from Sedgwick County and outlying counties. The Lord's Diner exists solely from the generous financial support of individual donors. We are also blessed to have the support of local businesses through financial and in-kind services. Spirit Aerosystems, the Doc Hill Family Foundation, Learjet Coleman Employees, Suburban Landscape, Spectrum Health Foundation, Cargill, Brand Plumbing, Trader Joe's, Dylan's, and so many, many others helped to make The Lord's Diner possible. We are honored to serve, on average, 2,000 to 2,500 guests each day. We greatly appreciate the recognition from city and county leaders for the support The Lord's Diner offers to some of the most vulnerable residents of Sedgwick County. Thank you.
Okay. And with that concludes the Chairman's Awards. So again, my thanks, and we will continue on with the meeting. So appreciation very much.
Are we, Madam Clerk, next item?
Item D, Report of the Boards of Bids and Contracts, regular meeting on January 7, 2021.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and you're here, and Commissioners. Joe Thomas, Purchasing Director. The meeting of the Board of Bids and Contracts of January 7 results in five items, and these items are, we're asking for your approval of. Item number one is the emergency vehicle parts for fleet management. If you remember, this item was originally approved by the Commission on December 16. However, prior to the creation of the contract, circumstances beyond the control of the vendor came up, and they had to withdraw. So what we're doing is recommending the next lowest bidder that met the specification. So here's the recommendation. We're recommending to accept the next overall low bid meeting specifications from KCOM Incorporated for an initial purchase of $87,725.10 and to establish contract pricing for two years with three one-year options to renew. Item number two is the Ninth Brain Suite Library Plus Training and Continuing Education Software for Emergency Medical Services, and this recommendation is to accept the quote from the Ninth Brain Suite LLC. That's at an annual cost of $18,744 and authorizing continued auto renewals per the contract language. Item number three is the On Call Carpet Services for various departments, and this recommendation is to accept the bid from Harry Street Carpet, and that's for a period of one year with two one-year options to renew. Item number four, six each of the 2020 Large Intermediate Four Door Sedans, and this is for fleet management, Sheriff's Office, and Sedgwick County District Attorney. Recommendation is to accept the low bid from Davis Moore Automotive Incorporated in the amount of $155,850. And our final item, three each of the 3/4-ton four-wheel-drive extended cab trucks with the eight, excuse me, eight-foot beds, and this recommendation is to accept the low bid meeting specifications from Don Hatton Chevrolet in the amount of $105,990. I'll be happy to try to answer any questions you may have, and I recommend approval.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioners. Any questions about the Board of Bids contracts? And I don't see any, so make a motion to approve the Board of Bids contracts as presented by Joe.
Second.
There's a motion in a second. Any other questions? Being none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Thank you, Commissioners. Thanks, Joe. Let's have a good New Year, okay? All right. Madam Clerk, next item.
Consent Agenda.
Good morning, Chairman. Commissioners, Tom Stills, County Manager's Office recommend approval of consent items E through O this morning.
Okay. The consent items are E through O. Does any Commissioner have any questions or want to pull any for additional discussion? I don't see any, so I'll make a motion to approve items E through O on the consent agenda.
Okay.
There's a motion in a second. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Lopez?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye.
Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New Business Part Two.
Mr. Papoon.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Mike Papoon, County Counselor. The New Business Part Two is going to be the selection of the Chair of the Sedgwick County Commission for 2021 and the Chair Pro Tem. This is something provided by Kansas statute that in the first meeting of the new year, we we elect a Chair and a Vice Chair. This year, excuse me, Mike.
So Mr. Chair, Mr. Outgoing Chair, we would like-
Before you proceed, apparently.
Yes. We have-
This is an off-agenda item, apparently.
As we do every year here at the Sedgwick County Commission, we would like to present you with an outgoing chair plaque. This year was a little unorthodox, if you will say, and so I think that we we got through it and we're thankful. I think I can speak for everyone here on this commission that we're thankful that you were our leader. Your calm leadership was very much appreciated and needed during this time of turmoil, and I think that we'd just like to appreciate you with this plaque. You can take that off if you need to use it later. So.
Okay. Well, thank you, Commissioner Cruz and all the Commissioners. Appreciate it. It's it's been a challenging year. We use that word challenging a lot. I kind of feel that that together, we've battled through it and overcome a lot of obstacles and hopefully made our community a little better place and a little safer place to live. So my appreciation. Okay. I don't see other comments, so let's go back to the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thanks, Mike. You might want to start over and make sure.
Okay.
Okay.
New Business Part Two is the selection of a Chair and Chair Pro Tem of the Sedgwick County Commission, provided by statute each year to be done at the first county commission meeting of the year. This year, we're going to do it a little bit differently than what we've done in the past, in that Commissioners can either nominate another Commissioner for Chair of the Commission or nominate themselves for the Chair. And then I believe that there have been paper ballots that have been provided for you with your names on them, in which you will then vote for who you want to be Chair, Chair first, and then the next item would be the Vice Chair. So with that, Mr. Chairman, you can proceed with the nominations.
Okay. Do we need to announce a nomination, or are we just voting?
I think you, we need to get some nominations into the record, sir.
Okay. Commissioner Howell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do want to say also, I appreciate your leadership this last year. It has been a challenging year, and it's appropriate that we recognize that you've, you have been that voice of calm. I appreciate that. That's a good comment. And trying to lead a commission through the 2020 has probably some of the most unique challenges we've ever seen as a as a Board of County Commissioners, and so you've done a great job. I want to just say that upfront. I would like to, first of all, nominate David Dennis as Chairman for 2021. Couple of reasons why I would like to do that. Number one, I'm looking at the history of Sedgwick County. It is a bad precedent, in my opinion, to have someone serve as Chairman twice in a row. In fact, the the last time that this happened, which was in 2018 and 19, I understand the reasons why it happened then, and that's fine. But before 2018 and 19, you have to go all the way back to when Don Gregg was Commissioner. This is prior to when we had five commission districts. It was, the last time this happened was in 1979. I'm sorry, Gregg served from 79 through 86, and the last two years that he was here, he was Chairman twice. I believe that it's best practice for us to to transition from person to person for numerous reasons. One of those is, actually been mentioned numerous times today already. One of the, one of the problems that we have is when, when one person continues to to serve in that role, it doesn't give other Commissioners the opportunities to understand the same depth of subject matter, to build the same relationships that that those other ones enjoy. For example, a hospital call that happens on Monday, I've not been allowed to participate in that this entire pandemic, except for one time when the other Commissioner that's would normally be on that call was not available. And that's unfortunate, because I have lots of questions, and if I was able to ask questions and understand more deeply what they're going through, it might change public policy. So it's best, I think, for us to have other Commissioners have that opportunity as well. There's other things, for example, the monthly meetings we have with the City of Wichita, which has been, I don't know if it's been happening lately or not, but when I was Chairman back in 2016, we met once a month with the the Mayor and Vice Mayor of the City of Wichita every month, and that was to discuss our priorities and challenges. And that was a tremendous opportunity, and we, as leaders, intentionally came together to make that happen. And there's also executive boards that the the people, people of leadership get to serve on, not to mention things like GWP, for example, Economic Development. And so there's, there's just tremendous opportunities for the the people in those positions to serve in a different way than other Commissioners have that opportunity. And so I would think that, you know, I know Colonel David, Colonel David Dennis, he's done, he's done a good job over his career. He's, he's demonstrated leadership on this, on this commission in the past. I trust him. He's been especially skillful when it comes to property cases and infrastructure. And so I think it's right that we would allow him to be our Chairman for 2021. And with that, I would move my motion to nominate him for Chair. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Cruz?
Thank you, Chairman. I think it is important to keep leadership consistent during a time of crisis, and that is why I will be nominating Pete to remain as Chair for 2021.
Okay. Thank you. Any other nominations? I don't see any, so cast your vote, sign your ballot, and hand to the clerk. And Clerk, could please read the ballots?
Commissioner Lopez votes for Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Dennis votes for Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Howell votes for Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Cruz votes for Commissioner Meitzner. Commissioner Meitzner votes for Commissioner Meitzner.
Okay, the ballots have been cast, and the vote was three to two. Next item, please.
Item Q, selection of one member of the Board of County Commissioners to serve as Chair Pro Tem through January 12, 2022.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Chair. Pass the ballots down. Thank you. I've served now, this will be my fifth year of serving on the Board of County Commissioners. And during the five years that I've, going on the fifth year, one Commissioner has not had an opportunity that served here longer than any of us to serve in any leadership position. And I think that, again, we need to spread things around a little bit and make sure that everyone has an opportunity to serve in a leadership position. Therefore, I nominate Commissioner Howell for Pro Tem. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. Commissioner Lopez?
Well, I think in normal years, I would love to see this kind of passed around a little bit more, but I will agree, in a time of crisis, I think it's important to keep management the same and just kind of keep pushing through. So I will nominate Commissioner Cruz for Pro Tem.
Okay. I don't, any other nominations? Being none, Commissioners, please mark your ballot and cast your vote.
Howell. Commissioner Howell votes for Commissioner Howell. Commissioner Cruz votes for Commissioner Cruz. Commissioner Meitzner votes for Commissioner Cruz.
Okay, the the vote was three to two. Commissioner Cruz be the Pro Tem. Okay. Next item, please.
Legislative issues.
Hakeem, Mike?
Good morning, Commissioners, Chairman, Hakeem Asher, Director of Communications. Just to provide you a brief update to the legislative, state legislative platform, as you guys know. Yesterday, we talked about the federal platform. Today, we'll just talk a little bit about what's going on in the state. Monday was the first day of session, so lawmakers were back in session. As I mentioned to you all last week, public comment at this point, more or less, looks like it's going to be virtual, so either Zoom or WebEx of some sort. The chairs have been removed from the, from the gallery. Lawmakers are, they were sworn in in sections. So there were a number of lawmakers that were sworn in, in kind of groups. This is to all keep down on potential clusters, to keep lawmakers as a whole from catching COVID altogether. So that's going to be a very fluid situation. I will continue to update you all as we get more information. In talking to Jason Watkins, our contract lobbyist, as you guys know, last night was a State of the State of Address. the State of the State address. There were a lot of important topics, too, one of which being the COVID-19 vaccine and kind of the rollout, what that looks like over the next couple of months. As you guys may have heard, the governor in conversations with the media in her briefing, she's kind of talked about state health departments, excuse me, local health departments moving into the phases twos and how that looks and who becomes a part of that. Adrian Byrne, Tim Kaufman, our group, they're working incredibly hard to kind of solidify those groups, make sure that we vaccinate everyone. There is an update. I think we're supposed to have a vaccine today at some point, but again, more information will come from that. So the governor has, has given her support across the entire state to make sure the vaccine rollout continues to happen and that kind of that conduit between us and KDHE. Secondly, she really focused on maintaining an appropriate state budget and how that looks. You know, in my time in this role, I will continue to work with Jason and Mike as well to kind of learn a little bit more about that and kind of how that affects here, us here locally and our legislative platform that we have going forward. Okay, so there is an update to the property tax transparency bill. Lawmakers, senators heard this in committee yesterday. We expect that they're going to take a vote on that. We expect that they're going to pass it today, and then that will go to the full Senate to sit on the Senate floor. As you guys remember, this bill will, it's Senate Bill 13, will establish the notice of public hearing requirements prior to approval by a governing body to exceed its revenue neutral rate for property tax purposes. So that's what that bill talks about. Second, Representative Carmichael introduced House Bill 2036, which requires the Sedgwick County election commissioners to allow voters in Sedgwick County to vote at any polling place beginning in the 2021 primary election. At this point, we're not really sure where this stands, bipartisan support, but Jason is definitely watching that bill. This will affect the entire state, but I just kind of said Sedgwick County because obviously that's where we are. Lastly, just before the State of the State address, Governor Kelly announced a reorganization to combine DCF and the Department for Aging and Disability Services to create the Department of Human Services. So basically taking both of those departments separately and creating one larger department. The governor says it will be easier to access critical services and improve engagement between service centers, clients, and local stakeholders by creating one single point of entry. So folks who need those services will have just one organization to go to rather than two different organizations. So Jason believes that's going to be important for, obviously, a lot of folks right here in Sedgwick County. With that, that is all of my updates unless Mike has any additional, but I stand for questions if you have them.
The only thing I might add, and thank you, Hakeem, for, for asking me for an update. I did have some email exchanges yesterday with Senator McGinn, who's also a member of the Ways and Means Committee, and she's getting the language from the two bills we had last year and getting those introduced quickly. And by introducing them in the Ways and Means Committee, they won't be subject to the restrictions of turnaround, getting it all the way through the House by turnaround or Senate. So I think those bills will be up and moving as well.
Okay. Got a couple of questions here. I'm not sure who went first. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. If we go back a year when we were sitting in the same position, we had the vote anywhere for Sedgwick County bill being worked. Representative Carpenter was helping us work that. Senator Faust Godot was helping us work it. And then Secretary of State came down and said, hey, if you guys will back off of it this year, next year, meaning 2021, I will have it in effect. And so what does he do? He puts out some written guidance that there is no possible way that we can have it in effect in 2021. So I, I think that we need to go back and review our legislative agenda and include House Bill 2036 as one of our top priorities for Sedgwick County. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
That's a good point. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I agree with the comments of the previous speaker, but on top of that, I'd just like to know, have we reviewed that bill yet to find out what it does, the mechanics of, of that bill?
I haven't reviewed it yet, commissioners. I'll review it today and get back.
I'll plan on doing that today. I think, I think one of the key pieces is that Senate Bill 130, as passed, was a permissive, permissive policy. It did not mandate that any county had to do this. It was really dependent on whether the county had the technology and, and the, the equipment and the desire to do this. It wasn't something that would be a mandate. Secretary of State has numerously, over the last few days, has talked about the expense of implementation. I don't know that we have much of an expense in Sedgwick County because our equipment's already capable of doing this. So I'd like to know, do we have an expense that would be something we need to be aware of to implement Senate Bill 130? Can someone please research that and find that out? We'd like to know that for sure. I'd like to know whether or not this bill from Representative Carpenter, I'm sorry, Carmichael, he's going to be upset with me for saying that. But whether or not this is a, it continues to be permissive, I don't know what it does exactly, but I think that initially, a year ago, this basically pushed forward the rules and regulations deadline, which by, by the way, I believe right now requires public comment, and the date that that is planned is on February the 16th. I think we need to be at the table. And I think I personally have lots of comments I would like to make sure that are presented there either by myself or by this commission. As presented, the rules and regulations, and by the way, I'd like to commend Diane Lefler with Wichita Eagle did a tremendous story on this. But the details of the rules and regulations as currently laid out, it requires us to know specifically which equipment we're going to use, specifically how much equipment we're going to use in each of the, each of the vote centers. It's clear that, I don't think that, that the secretary understands that we plan on making every poll site a vote center, which was what we presented when we forwarded this legislation in the first place. But he goes on and says, we have to know how many parking spaces. We have to know the addresses of these locations. We have to verify how many chairs are in these locations, and on it goes. And so there's a lot of requests for information, and all that has to be presented to the Secretary of State's office six months prior to the election, which of course would be in August. If you do the math, we don't have time this year to present such a detailed plan. So these rules and regulations, in my opinion, are not focused on the things they need to be focused on. There are some legitimate questions that need to be answered. For example, could we, could we use our ballot printers and print a proper ballot for a voter that was voting outside their location rather than voting on a machine? I know that they could still do a proper ballot and do a provisional outside their poll site, for example. Would that be something we would allow? That seems really quite simple to do so. But that's the type of rules and regulations that need to be addressed. And right now, currently as stated, those rules and regulations don't even address that. So I have a number of questions about that. I think we need to have a workshop, Mr. Manager, on, on the property tax bill. Once again, I have some ideas that I'd like to share with my colleagues. This is probably not the appropriate time today, but I do think we need to discuss the fact that this bill is moving forward, and I think we need to be, I guess, a little bit more pragmatic on what we would expect, some, some changes that I think that might be more acceptable to the committee or to the legislature in the whole, as a whole. I have an idea, and I presented this to at least Lindsay and to the manager, and my initial response was, it seems very reasonable, and it seems like it would work. And it kind of is a compromise that I think is something that needs to be hashed out by the, by, by the board here. And if we think this is a good idea, then we want to present that as testimony as this bill moves forward. And then finally, I would just say, one of the issues we've talked about over the years that I think that needs to be talked about again, and again, I, I certainly support our current election commissioner, this has nothing to do with her, but I do think we ought to talk about whether or not the Board of County Commissioners ought to be able to appoint the county, the county election commissioner in the four largest counties. There has been legislation in the past that does that. I think we need to review that idea and dust that off and have a discussion about that also. That might be another topic for that workshop, hopefully soon, that we can, that might be something we might need to add to our legislative platform. So I'll just, I'll stop with that, and those are, those are my comments. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay, thank you. As a follow-up to Commissioner Dennis, I know we've got our legislative agenda pretty kind of printed and everything else, but I think a, with the new development, I would be in favor of a, of a, of a good letter that we get on file instead of trying to go through the reprinting. But I think we could do that sooner than later, and we're all probably in agreement that that needs to be, that we'd be supportive of it. I don't think that'd be too difficult.
Chairman, when we got the, when we got the notice from the Secretary of State about the rules and regulations a little over a week ago, our intention is to have finance and legal and the election commissioner review that, bring it back to the commission for discussion and workshop. We would have done that yesterday, but the, the election commissioner had a medical procedure that could not be avoided, so we're going to do it next Tuesday. And I'll just throw to the list that while we're discussing that, we can bring up the property tax bill also, sir, do it during that same time, and then the appointment of the election commissioner, bring all three of those items up and kind of have a mini workshop next Tuesday regarding legislative issues.
Okay. All right. I don't see any other comments at this point. I think if any commissioners, especially new Commissioner Lopez, if you have further questions, you can for sure get with Commissioner, I mean, with Mike Papoun and Tom and get some background on, on those. And you're free to visit with any of the commission yourself to get more background from their, from their point of view. And I think they'd all be open to share. It's, it's got a little bit of history to it, and so you can help. You bet. So, okay. Clerk, next item, please.
Other.
Okay. Under other, I don't know who went first. Commissioner Dennis. And we do not have an executive session today, so this is under other.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Last Friday, I had an opportunity to participate in an event, a joint event with the City of Wichita and with Sedgwick County Zoo, and it was to establish a fundraising event and also kind of a fun event for our Sedgwick County Zoo. So if any of you drive down 21st Street, right across from the Sedgwick County Zoo, you're going to see two huge cranes, bigger than the cranes you're going to find downtown here in Wichita right now. And on the top of one, I have not been by lately since Friday to see, but they were supposed to put this huge gorilla up on the top of one of those two cranes. And part of that is a naming contest for that gorilla that's going up there. And that naming contest is a fundraiser for the Sedgwick County Zoo. And you can vote for the name by donating a dollar, and you can do it one of two ways. You can either go in and text NWWF for the Northwest Water Facility, I guess, I'm sorry, Northwest Water Facility. And so text NWWF to 76278. Say it again. Text NWWF to 76278. If you don't want to text, you can go online and go to NWF, NWWF, I'm sorry, NWF.givesmart.com. And you could actually donate more than a dollar if you're wanting to do that. This contest will run for a total of four weeks, so make sure you get your vote in to help support the Sedgwick County Zoo. The three names, and the names are not Pete, Dave, and Jim. They're actually have already been determined for you. And the first name is Eno, E-N-O. It's a traditional African name translated to water god. The second name that you can choose is Amazi, which translates to mean water source. And finally, more traditional is Hydro Joe. So you can text and choose one of those three names. And as I said, it's a fundraiser for the Sedgwick County Zoo. The other thing is, water is a precious resource, and life depends upon water, not only the lives of all the citizens here in, in this area, but also the lives of all of the animals that we have in our Sedgwick County Zoo and throughout the world. So this is a way to help support all of those animals that we have at the Sedgwick County Zoo and to have some fun at the, at the same time. So I certainly urge each and every one of you to either text NWWF to 76278 or go to NWF.givesmart.com. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Dennis. So King Kong is not eligible? All right. Commissioner Lopez.
Thank you. Do you want to go first?
Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. That way we can close with you.
Oh, gosh, okay.
Thank you, Chairman. This next year, I'd like to propose creating a slot, a time slot, for commissioners to give updates on the boards that they serve on. We have an opportunity to communicate to our fellow commissioners about the work that's being done. I currently serve on ten boards. I serve on the Kansas African American Museum, Humankind, the Arts Council, the Education Committee of the Arts Council, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, the Downtown Board. I have my Citizens Advisory Board, the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, which is incredibly important for the work that's being done, the Access to Care Committee that's with the Mental Health and Substance Abuse Coalition, the Suicide Prevention Coalition, and then I host a policy talks on my own. I would like to open up a conversation regarding that because TCAM receives funds from the county, the Arts Council receives funds from the county, Criminal Justice Coordinating Council obviously does a lot of work associated with the county. And so to keep everyone up to date and understand kind of what's going on within our community, I wonder if we can create a time, if it's maybe once a quarter. I don't know how frequently it would be appropriate to address all of the boards. That could be a pretty lengthy conversation, considering that we all serve on a lot of boards. But I'd like to present that in an open format so that we can address these things so that all of us know the work that's being done on these boards. That's really all I had to say. I'd like to, I'd like to hear your feedback. Maybe you have some.
No, that's a, I think that's a good idea, similar maybe to legislative issues. Sometimes there isn't any, and then sometimes there's just one or two. So I think you're right. If we did it all in one, it'd be very lengthy. So maybe we just consider adding that, like after legislative issues, board issues, and if any member had a, had a recent meeting to share, then I think that's very valuable for, for not only us as a group, but for the public. So thank you for your idea, and we will, we will also, so Commissioner Howell, did you have something? Okay. And then before we go to Commissioner Lopez, I just want to thank the board. I'm humbled and honored to serve again. I know it's been, we've had some discussions about it. I had some personal transgressions about being able to serve as the chair again. Kind of went with the, with the history of, I know we had Commissioner Dennis was the chair for a couple of years in a row because we needed some, we had some challenges there that, that were unfinished. And I'm not sure we have the hugest of challenges that we had, but this pandemic is, is still not over yet, and there, there is some consistency as to why I, I have agreed to continue on consistency. I have learned that each of you commissioners have incredible individual talents that are not the same in each of us. And I would want to try to make a conscious effort to, I know, I could give examples of each of us, of each of you, of what your passion is, what your talent is, what your background and your knowledge is. And I'd like to further recognize that, to expand and allow each of you to, or appoint and whatever, support each of you in your, your personal endeavors to help make our, our county a better, better place and exercise your value as we see fit. So I will, I would ask if each of you feel that you could add in an area? I think we've tried to recognize that before, but if each of you feel a passion about a particular area or a board, things like that, that, let's have a discussion about it and see what we can do. So with that, I would, again, thank you, everybody. I'll, I'll close before I hand it over to Commissioner Lopez that, you know, we had the, every year, there's a solace. The sun changes, and it's a kind of a gradual, every day, there's an extra minute or two of sunlight. And I kind of feel that maybe between now and June 22nd, when it starts going the other way, that maybe in this pandemic world that we're getting, the days are getting brighter by a few minutes, and maybe that's what we're, with our vaccinating and, and everything else we're trying to do, that our community will be just a little brighter, slow brighter every day. So I'll close with that. So with that, Commissioner Lopez. So with that, Commissioner Lopez?
Okay, thank you, Chairman, and the rest of the commissioners for all of your warm welcoming's, and, you know, I just really appreciate your kindness over this last few days as I'm getting started. So I just have a few thank yous real quick. First and foremost, I, I really want to thank everybody in South Sedgwick County for placing your trust in me to represent you for the next four years. To everybody who supported my campaign over the last year, I think this was the definition of a grassroots campaign, and everything that you've done really made the difference. You know, my team, there's no way I would be sitting here if it wasn't for every single one of them. And then to all the amazing staff at the county, you guys have made this transition period to where I'm not starting at, you know, ground zero this week, but I've really kind of hit the ground running, so I appreciate everything that you've done to really help me in this process. And then, you know, my friends and family, working full-time and having three kids and running a campaign, there's no way I could juggle everything, so for everyone who gave my kids rides to practices or helped with dinners or any of that, I just don't know how I would have gotten it done without all your help. And then I know my kids aren't watching. Well, I'll take that back. They better not be watching because they should be on remote learning, so, but if they are watching, if they watch this later, I just want to thank them as well. They were the reason I wanted to run, and, and they make me want to be better every day. And like most parents, I just want to leave the community better than I found it for them. So that was kind of the initial start for this, and so I want to thank them and, and tell them how much I love them. You know, sitting up here today, I, I'm not going to lie, I am nervous, but I'm, I'm excited to get to work. One of the things that I'm most passionate about is really ensuring that the people of Sedgwick County have access to quality physical and mental health care. This year has shown just how vital these service, these public services are to our community, and I really want to give everything I can to ensure that the valuable services continue to support and grow to meet the needs for the people in Sedgwick County, especially through difficult times like we're in. I'm also passionate about making sure that the South Side is able to attract new and diverse businesses that will grow our economy and bring in more well-paying jobs to the area. So I'm happy to sit up here and be able to bring back a voice for the hard-working families in South Sedgwick County because we really do have some of the hardest-working families, I want to say, in the state. So thank you all so much.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lopez, for your comments. I don't see any other comments, so today's meeting will be adjourned with my new plaque adjourned.[1763.13]